...United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adam Clark, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Mayor Beagle is excused. Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Present.
Councilmember Bierman?
Present.
Councilmember Gottschalk?
Here.
Councilmember O'Dea?
Here.
Councilmember Scher?
Present.
We have Cora.
All right. Any changes or additions to the agenda? City Manager Brown?
Deputy Mayor, I'm on, thank you, sir.
Assistant City Manager Benson?
I've known, sir.
Any from the diets? All right. We have no corresponden-- our, sorry, we have minutes, um, we have no, no minutes. Oh, yeah, this is gonna be interesting. No correspondence either. First call of the public. I will read quickly the rules for the call of the public. Public shall address council during the call of the public, which is included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. First call to the public immediately after correspondence is limited to agenda items only. Persons shall not address council in excess of five minutes unless the time is expended by majority vote of the council's present. Persons wishing to address council shall identify themselves, place of residence, and state their reason, and all comments made by the public shall be made to the council. Do we have anybody for the call of the public? Seeing none, close the first call of the public. Next on the agenda, we have the city managers' reports, departmental report from October 2025. Any questions, discussions? Councilman Bierman?
Uh, for Tim, I believe, uh, just reading through, I saw that the DPW staff had to go through and clean up after the new janitorial contract?
Yes.
Um, is that getting better, or?
That, that has been, I don't even wanna say, yes, it has been getting better. We met with them and we did bill them for that work that we did.
I, just noticed, like, up here, it seems like it's been vacuumed for a while. I mean, there's stuff on the floor. It might be.
Yep. We will, uh, we will get, get them to do that as well.
Okay.
It's, it's been, we have a couple of clipboards throughout the city that they're, they're now looking at. Kind of retraining a little bit. It's a little different than the last company, but it's still, it's still a change that we're trying to work through.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, I have another question on the overtime.
Yes.
I noticed that we already have 493.5 fiscal year-to-date, and then last, the last three-year average was only 398. Where is the majority of that overtime coming from?
Yeah, the mo-- most of that is coming from what we do at the Parks and Rec, and we do have some work there that we do on a weekly basis, picking up trash and, and whatnot. The major one this last month was for the, the Fall Festival of the Panth-- called Panther Hunt. Uh, that was 160 hours just, just with the Panther Hunt. And then we, we do the, the Barbecue Blues. There were a couple guys at that one. And, uh, you know, the Thursday night, um, the movie night, we had, we had a couple folks at that one as well. So, um, it does, it does seem, uh, a little high from the 270 that we had in the past. Um, and we've been asked by Parks to, uh, to increase our, our work over with them. So, yeah, that's where most of that went.
Maybe, uh, for next budget season, we need to think about how can we reduce the overtime, but yet still get the?
They can still get that work done.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we'll work with Parks and Rec to, to see what, um, what we can do there.
Councilman Gottschalk?
Thank you. Um, same line, it looked like, uh, I believe it was DDA line item was accounting for quite a bit of the increase on that, cause that caught my eye as well. Is everything that we're doing for DDA per our agreement with them for reimbursement, is that being logged as overtime hours, or?
It, it is not, um, if it's, if it's during the week, but we do weekend, we do weekend trash pickup along, uh, Wixom Road, that all gets logged in. So that, that would be one, one area that we do each, each week during the summer months as well. So, that's, that's another, another area that, that we have increased just for, just for the, the account, and that is actually built to the DDA.
Okay. Cause I know, um, it was a handful of years ago, we were voting on, I think, Mayor, it might have been Mayor Ziegler at that point, we were voting on increasing, like, the leaf collection capacity, buying a new truck instead of whatever trailer we were using.
Yes.
And there was a promise that the overtime would go down because that would be more efficient.
Right.
Never gone down.
We have not gone--
And now we're going way up. So, um, to the deputy mayor's point, I'd like to see some form of structure to start trying to rein that in as well.
Certainly.
Thank you.
The, uh, the leaf program, we have not, we have not done any overtime this, this year on, on that, and, uh, we had, we had the two crews out, um, for probably three weeks now. And we feel that, yeah, that's been much better on, on that end. But now we've, yeah, there's other changes that have occurred that we've been asked to do, so. Thank you. Yep.
Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Move on. Consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which event the items will be removed from the consent agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of the unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Support.
All right, we have a motion to support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Moves on to unfinished business, which we have none this week, and on to new business. New business item number one. There's a recommendation to approve a professional services agreement with Safebuilt Michigan LLC to extend the term of the agreement for building department services for a three-year period to expire December 31st, 2028, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion to support. All right. Mr. Benson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, members of city council. Before you tonight is a, uh, is a recommendation to consider a professional services agreement, um, extension with Safebuilt. Uh, they provide building department services for the city, including the provision of a building official, a building inspector. There's mechanical inspectors, electrical inspectors, plumbing. Uh, so this agreement, uh, before you tonight is pretty much the same, oh, it's almost exactly the same from a fee structure as what the city has been operating on since we began this agreement in 2014. Um, there was actually one point that it went down from 65% to the current 63.5% of permit fees that are reimbursed to them, um, you know, for, for their services. Um, and that's the majority of, of really how this particular contract works. They get a portion of the permits and the work that they do. Um, there are some hourly pieces for things like, um, one-off code enforcement, um, you know, potentially court appearances. We've been using hourly fees even less lately now that we have a part-time code enforcement officer. And we, we still, there are still some cases, but it's, uh, much less. So, uh, in general, administration has been, A, satisfied with Safebuilt. Uh, we think that over the course of, of, you know, their time with Wixom, and specifically, I know with my time here with the city, um, they're responsive. They provide us a high, a high level of service, and we're very fortunate that they actually base their south, southwestern Oakland County operations out of our office. So they provide service to South Lyon, Milford, um, I'm sure there are, I think there are a couple others that Mr. Pike could reference. Um, but they spend a lot of time here. So they're available, they're present, um, and that's something that is not necessarily required, um, and something we're appreciative of. Um, I know many of you are familiar with this agreement. I'm happy to go through kind of any of the nuance of it, uh, if, if you have questions. But what you're seeing tonight is a new contract from the perspective of being rewritten. Historically, we've just done amendments on top of the old underlying agreement. It was starting to get a little unwieldy, so, um, they suggested a new kind of base agreement. Most of the provisions are the same. There were a couple minor things that changed. Um, those are outlined in the agenda items. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, and Mr. Pike is here as well, if there's any questions for Safebuilt.
All right. Councilman Bierman?
Just, uh, I'd like to understand the background of why they felt a non-compete agreement was not necessary after we've been contracting with them for as long as we have?
You're talking about the provision of, uh, the non-solicitation clause. Uh, I, I can't necessarily speak on their behalf. Um, my understanding is that somewhat of a standard clause they use now, it's probably related to, um, their, you know, over time they've, they've lost communities, or they've left communities. Um, perhaps that's an issue. You know, but we felt, we actually did negotiate on that. Uh, it's currently written as, um, if we were to hire a Safebuilt employee who serviced the city within one year of exiting our contract with them, we would owe them 50% of the, the sal-- salary as a penalty. Uh, that actually started off at 100% in their original draft, but we did negotiate that down. Um, I would say it's probably based on experience in other communities.
I guess my, I mean, assuming the contractual relationship continues to work the way it has been working, I don't see it being an issue. But let's say the contractual of the company was to fall apart, and, you know, Mr. Pike was out of a job, um, so we would have to make the financial decision at that point in time whether or not we wanted to basically pay them a 50% penalty to hire him? I just, it seems--
I guess I would have--
It just seems like something bizarre for them to be asking now that they haven't had for over a decade.
I couldn't speak to, again, the, the exact background. Um, my impression has been that, like, hey, this is kind of the format we've been using, this is what we propose. I would also say that it's hard to speculate on specific scenarios, right? There's a million ways that that particular clause could come into play. Uh, I'm just, I don't have a solid answer for you on that. That's just what they proposed, um, and kind of what we collectively settled on is, um, you know, what we felt was a reasonable middle point on their request.
Any feedback?
I just, not a fan of those clauses in contract period.
I'm Ken Pike. I am the building official for the city of Wixom, currently with Safebuilt. Um, what we've experienced is exactly the reason why that's in the contract. Um, whether it's cities soliciting our employees, or our employees soliciting the cities. Um, it just needs to, we have problems with people leaving, and people are hard to find. Just, it's, they're hard to find quality people. And this is how we try, I, I believe this is added into our contract to try to mitigate that, if you would, so that doesn't happen as often. It, it's not, it's not happened here, but it has happened in other communities. But because it's a generic contract, if you would, it's just language that's put into the contract of all our contracts. Uh, some of the con-- the language has been removed even from this contract. As Drew said, it was negotiated down. It is normally at 100% for one year. And then, you know, if, if Safebuilt fell apart, who's there to pay?
If, if-- Somebody would there be there to collect it?
Well, like, I don't know if it fell apart completely, it wouldn't. Who would you pay?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the terms of the contract besides that. Um, also think we probably should fit in budget, uh, a new coat for Mr. Pike, a new logo.
Mr. Pike had to buy his own coat, please.
Yeah, we didn't extend to him the, uh, the opportunity to purchase through the store like we did with others, probably our fault.
Friendly amendment to contract, give him a coat.
Appreciate it.
But I found in the last 10 years of my career, non-solic-- non-solicitation clauses became standard for contract services, including janitorial services. That's just very standard language nowadays, so. Uh, Councilman Brown?
Thank you. Um, just, if I could, um, through the deputy mayor to respond to, to Councilmember Bierman's, um, question. I, I can say that it is standard. I know I see it in contracts that we have as well. And one of the problems is, as Mr. Pike had, um, talked about, was there's so many municipalities that don't outsource the, the, um, inspection services, that don't have inspectors. We can't find inspectors. Novi is one of them. And I have heard of, uh, we haven't done it, but in, in Novi, I should say, but there's been other communities that I know of that have tried to steal employees away from, not just Safebuilt, but other agencies that do inspection services. So, I, I don't like it either, but I understand why it's there. So, um, but then I did have a question, um, for either Mr. Benson or Mr. Brown. The, uh, the $530,000, is that our, are those our, our fees, or is that what we paid Safebuilt?
That is what we've paid Safebuilt on average.
Okay.
Right, so we kept 36.5% of, of fees or rest of it is what's been paid to Safebuilt at that 530,000?
Yeah, I mean, there are years that it's been as low as, uh, 290,000 and years that it's been as high as, I think the highest I have in front of me is 673,000. Um, so it's entirely dependent on volume.
Sure.
We just wanted the benefits of this arrangement, right? If we had that experience when we had staff, we're not gonna get rid of a inspector because we don't have work for them to do when the work's down. You're gonna absorb the loss, and in this case, we don't have to do that. It goes up and goes down, and our expenses go up and down accordingly.
And we wouldn't be able to find anyone anyway.
Correct.
I mean, I didn't say we wouldn't, but chances are we wouldn't.
Right.
And then my other question is, um, oh, do you know how many, how much work they've done on the code compliance side of things since we hired someone?
I do not have that number directly in front of me. Um, I could do a little bit of digging. I would venture to say, I mean, historically, we were doing approximately $7,000 a year in annual charges on that front. That is probably down to less than three, it's probably less than two. Um, there are specific cases, um, is an example of code enforcement issues of, um, that might be a building code issue, um, where there might, if, if there's a building code issue and there's a permit attached to it, generally it's just handled, like, hey, there's gonna be a building permit or trade permit associated with it. Um, some times there's not. I mean, they're, they're kind of unique, specific scenarios, but in those cases, that's where that hourly piece comes from. Uh, but I would say it's probably less than 2,000.
Okay. Yeah, I would, I would hope that that would keep going down. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilman Scher?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, Mr. Pike, uh, the $530,000, I, I understand moves around year to year, but about approximately, how many people are, would you say, full-time, uh, uh, staff here at Justin Wixom? Two and a half, or?
I have, um, including myself, I have three full-time staff members, two part-time staff members. Uh, one of the part-timers, I'm working on trying to move that person into a full-time position. I feel a responsibility to employees.
And do you, uh, manage, like, the volume drops? How do you manage that? Do you send employees part-time to other municipalities who might have a higher volume? Is that, Safebuilt has a lot of local municipalities that they can move people back and forth as needed to manage the demands of the business?
Correct. Uh, so my inspectors come here, they go to South Lyon, some, a couple of them go up to the Village of Milford and do inspections. I've done inspections in the Village of Milford. There was a transition period there where I covered as a building official while they hired one.
Okay.
Um, and that was the agreement we had come with them. But, um, I do move around, we all move around. Um, I do spend, like, as, uh, Mr. Benson said, I do spend most of my day here. It's just convenient. I like the atmosphere. It's, it's a nice place, but, yeah. So we do, uh, manage that. Um, clients come, clients go. Um, it's not about sending people out the door. We, we wanna be here, we wanna stay here. Um, we want all our clients that way.
If I may just expand, uh, one thing that, and I think this is kind of what you're getting at. I know, uh, Safebuilt, and I know this, cause Ken talks to me about it when he does it, even as far away as Owasso, Tuscola County, um, I think you guys down, we're down at East Point a couple weeks ago?
Yeah, I was in E Course a week ago, a week ago.
E Course.
You pitch in wherever, if, I mean, the need arises at a municipality, Safebuilt covers, they'll might ask for up, extra help.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilman Gottschalk?
Thank you. Um, nothing for you, just questions for, uh, the assistant city manager. The, looking at the two additional clauses here, um, with the solicitation hiring of consultants and employees, one thing, um, that isn't specified, it says, uh, municipality shall pay to consultant placement fee equal to 50% of the employee's annual salary, including bonus and training certification. Doesn't say if that's the salary we're paying them, or the salary they used to pay them. So I think that should be clarified, um, because if we wanted to offer someone, uh, a $1 salary and pay Safebuilt 50 cents for a minute and then, uh, bring them fully onboard, that should be addressed.
Sure.
Um, the other thing that probably should be, um, or at least I would like included in here, if we can, is the first part of that section also doesn't clarify, um, says we shall not solicit, recruit, or hire, or attempt to solicit, recruit, or hire any employee or former employee of the consultant. Doesn't make an exception for someone that they terminate on their own. And I think that, I mean, I understand their list of re, like, keeping staff who don't have convictions, like, obviously, we wouldn't want to hire someone that's that way. But if Safebuilt changes their business structure, and they have to terminate someone, I don't believe, we should be on the hook for, um, then hiring that person if we decided to. So I would prefer having those two changes made at some point. Thank you.
Um, one question I had, uh, assistant city manager Benson. Performance-wise, I know you said administration is very, very pleased with their performance. Are there any performance metrics sent out to companies? Because we attend a lot of ribbon cuttings, and one of the questions I always ask, how did we do? And we is a reflection of how Safebuilt performed during the build process, all the way from the site plan approval all up through final inspection, right? Do we send any type of performance metrics out to those companies?
We do not have any routine performance metrics. Um, we, and we kind of kicked it around as part of the RRC process, um, of, you know, what would be the best way to do that. Uh, one of the problems is that, that surveys in general are difficult to get people to fill out. So as an example, um, previous community I worked in, we put a survey link on your permit, and you could fill it out, and we encourage you, put it in big bold letters, tell us how we did. And, um, you know, that, that was a larger community, and even that was a little tough. I, I'd like to get better at that. I know Safebuilt has some degree of, of, uh, although is that mainly for us as your clients that you're seeking feedback?
Uh, the feedback that we seek, we have, uh, basically a postcard-type, um, card out on the table that I keep, I try to keep on the, the counter there, that encourage contractors to respond back. And it's a, it goes back to Safebuilt, and they kind of monitor how things are, how the contractors are, uh, how they, they perceive the service. Um, you know, whether it's a timely plan review to, you know, inspections, um, you know, there's some contractors understand we're gonna give them red tags at time to time. There are some contractors that do not like to see a red tag, and they don't believe they should get them. So, it, it's kind of a, a double-edged sword at that point, too.
Do you get any response?
Yes, we do. Yeah. I, I really encourage people that are happy, that, hey, please fill this out button. Um, I know the numbers are there. I really don't pay attention to the numbers.
Might be something to consider.
Sure, that's something we could look into a little bit more.
All right, very good. So, if there's no further questions, we have a recommendation to approve a professional--
Just as a, as a question, are we able to have those things amended after the fact, or should we?
Yeah, I think, I think what we can do, and I'll defer to city manager Brown here as well, um, but what I would think is, I, I don't think, if city council is comfortable with it, if you all work to approve this tonight, I think we could get some minor tweaks to that particular section for additional clarity, um, and have that be the final version. You know, we could have the, the mayor be given the red line version. I don't anticipate wholesale changes. It's really just, you know, a couple words. If you guys are comfortable with that, then I think that's something we can do. Thank you.
All right, I'll read the original motion. Okay, we have a recommendation and a second to approve a professional services agreement with Safebuilt Michigan LLC to extend the term of the agreement for building apartment services for a three-year period to expire December 31st, 2028, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Which brings us to the second call of the public. Since nobody else new popped in, I won't read the rules to the call of the public, but if anybody wants to come up, they're so welcome to do so. Seeing nobody, I'll close the second call of the public and move on to the city manager's comments. City manager Brown?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, we have a couple of things in the CMU that, uh, city manager update that, um, I provided for your information. Uh, we've got the work anniversaries ranging from 24 years in the DPW with Jim Byrd to, uh, uh, new employee Nolan Clark with two years. Uh, also commented upon the, uh, collaboration with Oakland County through county commissioner Rob Smiley, uh, and our success in securing a partial grant from the county for a holiday lighting enhancement program. Uh, the first dividends on that are being paid. We've got a new, uh, Joy Light, uh, attraction, if you will, that's in Sibley Square Park. Uh, hasn't been lit yet, it will be lit, uh, with the tree lighting. Uh, but that's the first thing that's been, uh, installed there under that grant. Uh, there's additional things that are listed there with, uh, two, uh, candles, three spiral snow, snowflakes, four forks, snowflakes, and three snow people that will also be added as part of that. Um, the county provide, provided $10,000 out of a $20,000 cost that we project for those, uh, new lighting attractions. Uh, so that was the only, uh, two items that we had in CMU, and other than that, we have some dates to remember, including, uh, tree lighting coming up on December 5th, I reminded you about, uh, one of our biggest events and most popular events. So I'm looking forward to that, and, uh, that's all I had with the city manager update.
Very good. Assistant city manager Benson?
Uh, just one, I guess, little quick thing on the downtown front. Most of you are aware of a couple of our new businesses, but for the benefit of anyone who might be in the audience, uh, uh, one new business downtown, Let's Brunch, just officially opened on Monday. Um, we also have a new business, um, Mela Delicatessen, taking over the former Doe, uh, bakery space downtown, and then Apocetary Coffee, taking over the former Trails Edge space. Those, the last two I just mentioned are not open yet, but we anticipating them being open either, uh, in December or at worst, early January. So, um, exciting things to see, and we're happy to see those vacancies getting picked up pretty quickly. That's all I have.
Very good. Positive. Super. With, uh, then, I'll move on to council comments. We'll start going with the council.
Uh, the only thing on that is, uh, I had the opportunity to go and have, uh, breakfast this morning at Let's Brunch. Uh, the service was phenomenal, and the food was awesome. So I would, uh, also, uh, recommend, uh, others taking the opportunity to go there. Very, very good staff.
Councilman O'Dea?
Thank you. Uh, not much. I know I wished everyone a happy Thanksgiving last Tuesday for kidding we had this meeting this week, so can't be grateful enough. So, uh, just putting that out there for everyone, uh, in the great city of Wixom.
Councilman Scher?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, first of all, I, I mentioned to, uh, Director Sigma about the safety path on North Wixom Road. Went from a pile of gravel to gravel spread forms in place, and we're almost there on that one path. You're gonna pull the path ends signed down, too, I hope. When, when the concrete gets poured. So another success in our safety path program. Thank you. Uh, looking forward to the Christmas lighting, uh, Christmas tree lighting. It was always a good band. Hope to see everybody there. And last, but not least, without the mayor being here today, I had, I did communicate with them, and our bet is still on for tie wearing for the Ohio State Michigan game this weekend. And all I can say is, go Bucks! Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Granton Fox?
How, how can I, how can I follow that? Uh, I'd like to, uh, to thank, to thank and congratulate all those that, all those employees that are celebrating work anniversaries. And, um, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Councilman Gottschalk?
Thank you. Um, I feel like when we swear our oath for taking office, there's something about, like, promoting and upholding the constitution of Michigan, not like overtly rooting for the worst state in right below us or something. So that's, uh, I don't, I don't know.
Bring Ohio State tie for you, too.
Um, want to wish everyone a, um, safe and happy Thanksgiving, and a fun time at the tree lighting next Friday. Thank you. Thank you.
Very good. Um, all right, I also wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Had an opportunity today, my wife and I, to volunteer at Hospitality House and very humbling, um, you know, with, uh, all that had been going on with government, uh, programs and all, it's amazing to see how many people are in need in our community, but also the overwhelming support from cities like ours and churches and school groups for supporting Hospitality House. I never moved so much food in my entire life in four hours, so, but very good, uh, experience. Um, also for those residents who have never experienced it, our tree lighting is, uh, is a real highlight of December here in the city and, uh, it's always a great time, food trucks and live bands and, uh, beer tents and Santa Claus and activities for the kids, everything else. Also, uh, there's noteworthy is the windows to Christmas, um, over at the Gibson House starting December 1st. They do a good job. It's like the old-fashioned walk around and see windows decorated and old-fashioned themes, uh, like you used to see at Hudson's back in my day, but, uh, the, and they also have Owassail, uh, over there at, uh, on the 13th as well. Um, I think that's about all I have for today. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
To adjourn.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.